And join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible). I want to welcome everyone to our May 1st meeting and please note the council is in
full attendance this evening. I know we have a few people still coming in. Come on in, find a place to sit real quick or stand in the back and guard the door. Okay. We have, we'll move straight into items from council. There are two proclamations to be read and we have a lot of folks here for those proclamations. Before I do that, is there anything you guys want to talk about after? You want to wait till after to do the proclamations maybe?
After.
Okay. We have two. The first one is an arson awareness week and then the second one is motorcycle safety and awareness. So we'll do the arson awareness week, then the motorcycle safety and these guys want to take a picture outside. They also plan on coming all up for a picture up here too, right? Okay. So we'll do the arson first. Arson, go ahead.
Sure. This is a proclamation signed by the mayor and it reads in part, whereas the theme for the 2018 arson awareness week is reducing arson at vacant and abandoned buildings. Whereas according to the US Fire Administration intentional actions were the leading cause of vacant residential building fires at 34%. And whereas according to the National Fire Protection Association reports, fires in vacant buildings are more likely to have been intentionally set and spread beyond the building than fires in other structures and they also cause a disproportionate share of firefighter injuries. And whereas we will use the week of May 6th through 12th to focus on the importance of a cooperative effort with fire and emergency service departments, law enforcement, public works, insurance companies, and the justice system to help prevent the horrendous crime of arson at vacant and abandoned buildings. Now therefore I, Paul Palosik, Mayor of the City of Victoria, Texas, do officially declare the week of May 6th through 12th, 2018 to be arson awareness week in Victoria, Texas, and be it further resolved that the mayor and city council pay special tribute to all fire and law enforcement investigative agencies for their dedicated and tireless service. And it is signed this day by Mayor Paul Palosik.
Tom's going to say something. I just want like a few minutes to say thank you for this.
Right here, Tom.
All right.[185.12][185.12](laughter). I just want to take a minute or two just to say thank you for honoring us with this proclamation. I have my inspector investigators here, Kevin Lambret, John Starry, and Frank Noronho. Thank you so much for your time.
We appreciate what you do.
Thank you.[204.01][204.01](applause). Thank you.
Okay. Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month.
This is a proclamation honoring Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month signed by the mayor and it reads in part, whereas today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling on the roads of our country and whereas campaigns have helped inform riders and motorists alike on motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related risks, injuries, and most of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety. And whereas it is important to urge all citizens of our community to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle and for riders and motorists alike to give each other the mutual respect they deserve. Now therefore I, Paul Palosik, Mayor of the City of Victoria, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month in Victoria, Texas, and urge all residents to do their part to increase safety and awareness in our community. And it is signed this day by Mayor Paul Palosik.
I've got to put my glasses on because I can't see. On behalf of the Coalition of Clubs of Region 8, Corpus Christi, we, the bikers, would like to thank Victoria City Council for recognizing May Motorcycle Awareness Month. We are here to ask to please help spread the word to stop texting and driving. We are someone's loved ones, sons, daughters, mothers, fathers, brothers, sisters, and grandparents. So please remind everyone to look twice and save a life. Thank you.[343.72][343.72](applause).
The mayor would like to take a very brief recess while he steps outside to take a photograph. We will re-agree, reconvene shortly.
For a few minutes to take a picture with those folks. I know we all agree motorcycle safety awareness is important. Okay, we are still in items from council. There was a couple of things. Whoever wants to go first? Did you, Dr. Young, did you want to go?
Yeah, that's fine. I was wondering if we could get an update on the ongoing road maintenance that we've got going on throughout the city and if we can speak to, I've had a couple of people comment on, there's been, I think, a lack of perceived or actual poor communication once they started, if we can speak to that and what we can do going forward to hopefully rectify that if there was a problem.
Sure. The first course of the seal coat for the neighborhoods that we're doing in the 2018 seal coat went on last week. This week they're putting on the final touches of the, of the second coat.
Okay.
There are going to be some areas that we're going to have to sweep up rock, obviously. What we're wanting to do is give that, that emulsion a little bit of time to get all the rock pressed in before we go in and sweep. So it'll probably be a couple of weeks before we sweep, about two weeks before we go into a final sweeping. So to your other comment about some, some communication issues, that's absolutely true. We, our contractor did not go out and communicate as they should, especially in the country club area. We've corrected that situation and they're, they're going and putting out flyers and knocking on doors as they go through the second phase.
And that's in the contract that they're supposed to?
Yes, sir. Absolutely, it's in the contract.
One thing to add to that, while you brought it up, it's minor, but it's not minor, on the flyer it says, you know, and they actually knocked on my door and I talked to the gentleman so the second time. I'm in the country club area and he gave me the flyer. It says while we rebuild your streets. This is maintenance, not rebuilding. I don't know if you already, but it's important people understand this is a maintenance project, not a rebuild and, you know, to some people it makes a difference.
No, that's a good point. We'll make sure that gets communicated better next time.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Items from council? Jan, you look like you're about to say something.
I was thinking about it, but I'll hold it.
Okay.
There was some over there.
Yeah, sure.
I don't have an item from council. I have an item for council.
Okay, absolutely.
Before we get into this lengthy agenda, just as a reminder, next, the council meeting on May 15th, you'll be sworn in the four single-member districts members. So we'll be, have swearing-in ceremonies if some of you want, family members, pictures, opportunities. We will also need to elect a mayor pro tem that follows the term of the person holding. So that's, the mayor pro tem is Jeff Waltnait. His term is up, so mayor pro tem will have to be elected again. So we'll also do that on May 15th.
Okay. Okay. Anything, nothing else, items from council, we'll move into the rest of our agenda. We only have one item on the consent agenda. Oh, yeah, citizens communication, forgive me, just got in a hurry there. Anyone that'd like to come forward and speak now, come on up to the microphone, just give us your name, that's all we need, and try to keep your remarks to about five minutes.
Hello, my name is Chloe Hooker and I live at 120 Blue Rock Court. And I'm here today to talk about a change I think we should make in Victoria. About three months ago, I got my first dog Mia and it was the happiest day of my life. Now please look at the picture I have given you. She was the first dog my parents have ever let me adopt. She was three months old when we took her home. We got her home and we noticed right away that she wasn't very hyper because at this age, they should be really playful. And then we noticed she would drink a lot of water but not eat a lot of food. And so it began. She was barfing and she would sleep all day. So the next day, we took her to the vet and I found out that she was very sick with parvo and distemper and sadly, we had to put her down. It broke my heart. So some of you may think, why is she here? What is her point? Well, I will tell you why I am here, to make a change. I would like to ensure all the citizens of Victoria that if they adopt a dog from the pound, that it is actually healthy. My mom and I have seen more posts on Facebook recently about people who got animals from the pound and had the same situation that I had. When we adopted Mia, we were giving papers that said that she had seen a vet. I do not believe this is true, or if she did, she was definitely not tested for these deadly puppy viruses. That is what I would like to see change. If Victoria Animal Control is going to adopt dogs out to the community, it should be mandatory that those dogs are tested for all deadly puppy viruses within 48 hours of taking them to an adoption event. This will ensure that no little children have to go through the horrible nightmare that I went through. If it is in your power, please give Animal Control the money to do this. Thank you for listening and have a nice day.
Thank you, Chloe. You did a wonderful job of communicating and I want to commend you on that and we will pass along those concerns and I guarantee that to you, okay? Thank you. Citizens' communication is still open if anyone else would like to come forward. Seeing none, we'll close citizens' communication. And we do have one item on our consent agenda.
This is the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of April 17th, 2018.
Go move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Okay, ayes have it. Now we can just move straight into our work session.
So the first report tonight, Gilbert, are you going to speak to start with? You know, I was, water, wastewater rate study, Dave is here from NewGen. You hopefully have read the report, so, you know, this is a request that Mr. Palpaska made probably over a year ago and asked us to look at the rates to see if we were covering our cost and so we hired NewGen to do that and, Dave, I'm not going to take any more time, I'm going to let you get started.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Again, for the record, my name's Dave Yonkey. I'm the president of the Environmental Practice for NewGen Strategies and Solutions. We were hired in the fall to conduct this cost-to-service study. Just again, as a point of reference, I've been conducting water, wastewater, solid waste cost-to-service studies for a little over 25 years now, so. Let me tell you again briefly, the purpose for conducting this water and wastewater cost-to-service study was to develop a five-year forecast of your operating capital costs. This also included some of the new reoccurring program costs that were budgeted in and I'll show those to you in a, just a couple of minutes, as well as your capital improvement plan. So it's a five-year forecast, starting with your fiscal year 2018 budget. So we built out a five-year revenue requirement and again, I'll talk about that in more detail. And then we look at how much revenue are you currently recovering with your current rates? Are you under-recovering, over-recovering, getting just enough? Where are you? And then if you are under-recovering, we will develop water and propose water and wastewater rates that will recover all of the costs associated with operating your utility. Also, I'll just mention, I like to do these, they're pretty informal, so if anybody has questions, feel free to interrupt me. I'll answer your questions or you can hold them for the end. So in developing the five-year forecast, we started with your fiscal year 2018 budget. We also incorporated and worked with staff to develop your five-year capital improvement plan within the report. That is Schedule II of the report. One thing I will say, which is a very good thing that your staff does, you have a very detailed capital plan both for the water and wastewater utilities, which is really a good thing to have from a planning standpoint. We work with some clients when we're doing a five-year forecast, they do, they say, well, we have a rough idea of things we have to do, let's just budget an item. Here we have specific items and the budgeted dollar amounts for them, so it helps from a planning standpoint. Then we look at it and again, the detail, we look at three different aspects, those that are going to be funded with cash, or we'll call that pay-as-you-go. It's funded through the revenues generated through your rates that pay for capital projects where you don't have to issue debt for those projects. So you can see what we've budgeted for water and wastewater from a funding standpoint. Both water and wastewater have about $650,000 start, funded each year, starting in fiscal year 2018 for both water and wastewater and then it goes up over the five-year period. There are also some proposed bond issues for some major capital projects that are projected out in fiscal years 21 and 22. And then there are some other projects that are going to be funded from reserves. And again, this is another good thing that your utility has been able to do, is accumulate funds that has allowed some of these projects to be paid for with reserves or, you know, think of it, you know, I always use the example of you've got your checking account for your, your budget, you've got a savings account for when you've got to replace the transmission on your car or what have you. So you've got the reserves here to fund some of these projects, so three sources to fund these capital projects. These are all incorporated into our five-year forecast, which goes out fiscal year 2018 through 2022. In addition, we also incorporated into the five-year forecast some new and reoccurring programs and large purchases associated with the water and wastewater utilities. These are incorporated into the revenue requirement or the budget that we've put together. We've just summarized them here. If you have questions, we'd be glad to talk about them, but those are budgeted into the forecast as well. And then finally, in addition to all the operating costs, we have to forecast the existing debt service and the proposed debt service. And so you can see, if you look on the schedule, the third line of numbers, the fourth line of text where it says total existing debt, in fiscal year 2018, you have about $9,251,000 in debt service. It's about the same in 2019 and about the same goes down slightly in fiscal year 2020 where it's about $9,234,000. One of the things that your finance department has done from a capital planning and debt service standpoint, which is really good also, is they're planning to fund some of these projects with new debt and they're timing it with other debt service that's rolling off. So as some of that debt service rolls off, they're able to fund the new projects. And so if you look at that bottom line, if you look in fiscal year 2018, total debt is $9,251,000. In fiscal year 2022, it actually goes down slightly to about $9,111,000. So again, budgeting, planning your projects so that you can fund new projects while other ones are rolling off is a good financial planning approach. The one other thing we needed to do when we built out the five-year forecast is a number of different inflation factors, both for general cost, personnel, benefits, chemicals and electricity are huge components, as well as repair and maintenance. So we've got different inflation factors where we visited with staff and also used our prior experience. And then we have customer growth and we've had, we have a conservative assumption there. You always want to be conservative in your assumptions so you can minimize any potential revenue shortfalls by being, having unrealistic growth expectations. So bottom line, you have a five-year revenue requirement here. Let me catch up on my slides here. And so bottom line, you can see for 2018, we've got about $24,889,000 budgeted in the revenue requirement. In fiscal year 2022, it's at $27.5 million. So to give you an idea, that incorporates all of those capital projects, the debt service, the new reoccurring program costs, everything. If you look at that, that's about a 10% increase over a five-year period, so it's about two, two and a half percent increase overall, so right at inflation or slightly, slightly So based on that, the next thing we wanted to do is look at, okay, if that's our revenue requirement for the utility, how are we doing with regard to current revenues generated for the utility to fund these, these projects? And if you can look in your current fiscal year 2018, which is the year you're in right now, about seven months into it, you can see that with the current revenue requirement and current revenues that are projected to be generated, that overall, the utility is projected to over-recover slightly, $499,000, a little over half mil, or a little under half a million dollars. So just to look at it in a little detail, in fiscal year 2018, your water, if you look in the first column, you can see for water, you under-recover by about $1.46 million. But on the wastewater side, you're over-recovering by about $1.9 million. So you have a net over-recovery of right at half a million dollars. So that's great, your utility is right there. In case some of you have questions, you go, well, geez, that's half a million dollar over-recovery, you know, can we lower rates or do something to, you know, because that's half a million dollars more. The utility is dependent, this is based on a normalized weather forecast, normalized rainfall. And so as we all know, weather fluctuates drastically, you can have dry years, wet years. And so you can have your water utility, if you have a wet year, you can be, that number can go and be $2 million under-recovery. And again, that's why we do a forecast on a normalized rainfall pattern. We do that and so when you have a dry year, you over-recover. When you have a wet year, you under-recover and you put those monies aside when you over-recover. So going out and forecasting, you can see if you look at that second line from the bottom, 2018, you're in good shape, you are over-recovering about half a million dollars. You can see though, as you go out, you're under-recovering right at about $864,000 a year, $930,000 and, you know, about a million three.
Okay, just for clarification, that includes those projects we've put into those years that we would like to do.
Thank you for the, to clarify, you are correct. This includes, if you remember, I mentioned the new reoccurring program costs that are about $800,000 a year. That includes those program costs in here as well. So, thank you for that. So, okay. So, in order to fund that, we're going to have to look at some type of rate increases. So to, as a starting point, let's look at where our current water rates are and our minimum bills. So these are your current volumetric rates, minimum bills, pretty straightforward. What we are recommending right now is no increase in the minimum bill. I'm going to flip around here a little bit, but so for instance, for the average residential home with a three-quarter inch, three-quarter inch meter, it's $18.21 per month, that includes 2,000 gallons of water. We're recommending no changes in that minimum bill or in any of the minimum bills. Okay? What we are recommending, right now you have seven blocks in your volumetric rate structure and we would propose you move to four-block rate structure. And again, if you look at your current rates right now, if you count those blocks on the left, there are seven blocks and we're proposing that those be consolidated to four. The reason we're recommending that, most utilities and there's, for reference, the American Water Works Association is the, the trade association, member association for municipal water utilities and investor-owned utilities, it kind of is the association a lot of folks look to for guidance, recommendations, things like that, and best practices. One of the reasons that they recommend moving to say four or five blocks is that, number one, you don't, it reduces the probability of billing errors when you have seven blocks with those different, that many different tiers. It increases the probability of billing errors as you're, you know, using those different rates. If you use 20,000 gallons, you're going through a lot of different blocks that the rates are calculated for. Secondly, when there are four to five blocks, it jumps out a little clear, the price differential between those different blocks, which tends to encourage water conservation. So again, that's one of the reasons we're recommending that. If you do not go with the four-block rate structure, we wanted to show the other option of going with the seven-block, which is your current rate structure, you can see, we are recommending only a rate increase in fiscal year 2019. The fiscal year 2018, those are your current rates, so for instance, you pay your minimum bill, which includes 2,000 gallons, your first 2,000 gallons of water, and then let's say you use 7,000 gallons of water, then the next 5,000 gallons, you pay $1.92 per 1,000 gallons. Okay? What we are proposing and recommending for a rate increase is that $1.92 be increased to $2.15 per 1,000 gallons. And then if you look going down, there are some other very modest increases. For instance, the block 8,000 to 18,000 would go from 208 to 235, next block 240, 270. Bottom line, the blocks all increase anywhere from about, the first block 23 cents up to about 45 cents in the highest block. That is the only rate increase in the four-year period going forward for 2019 through 2022 we're recommending. One increase and that's it on the water side. And for, I'll just say, from our background or experience in doing that, that's a very modest increase. I'll show you the impact on average bills here in just a second. On the wastewater side, similar structure, you have seven blocks with the different volumetric rates that increase, just like for water, as you use more, the monthly minimum bills. On the wastewater side, again, we are not recommending an increase in any of the minimum bills, so the minimum bills would remain unchanged. We would recommend, again, going to a four-block rate structure. Again, your wastewater utility is in good shape right now. We are projecting and recommending, if you look there, a rate increase only in fiscal year 2022. If you'll see, they go from $2.50 to $3, $2.55 to $3.05, et cetera. That's in the four-block rate structure, we would recommend. If you decide to stay with the seven-block rate structure that you have, again, 2018 shows your current volumetric rates. So for instance, the 3,000 to 7,000 is $2.47 per 1,000 gallons. We would not recommend an increase until the fifth year, fiscal year 2022, okay? And then if you look, all the rates would increase by 50 cents per 1,000 gallons, but not until the fifth year. So bottom line, whatever rate structure you use, whether it's a four-block or the seven-block, you only, we're only recommending an increase in the volumetric rate for water in fiscal year 2019 and for wastewater in 2022, which is really good news. We have a lot of clients that are looking at significant rate issues and rate increases. So if we do this, you can see, bottom line, the utility is going to recover sufficient money by the fiscal year 2022. If you looked at that cumulative over/under line, you can see that you are at $758,000. You can see in 2019 through 2021, there's a slight under-recovery. You can see $9,263 in 2019. In 2020, a little under-recovery of $75,000 in 2021, $119,000. And then by 2022, when that wastewater rate increase kicks in, then you go positive and you're in the positive overall. So what people, there's a lot of numbers and I try not to drown people out with data, but at the same time, it's important for us to show you there's a very methodical and detailed approach to how we design these. But let's look at the average bills. That's what people always want to look at. So I'm going to show a couple of different scenarios and then we'll open it up for questions or you can interrupt if you have questions. But remember, I'm proposing a four-block structure and a seven-block is what you currently have. So for your average residential customer, what's the impact on the bill? If you go to the four-block structure, if you look at fiscal year 2018, for a residential customer that uses 11,000 gallons of water per month and 8,000 gallons of wastewater, and that, that represents what we would consider an average customer here within the City of Victoria, right now, under current rates, they would pay $73.68 for their total bill. That's what they pay right now. What they would go to in 2019 is $76.39. It would stay at that for 2019, 2020, 2021. And then when the wastewater rate increase would kick in, it goes up basically $3 from $76.39 to $79.39. So bottom line, what you're looking at over the next four years, fiscal year 2019 through 2022, about a $5 2022, about a $5.71 increase. So this is where I step back and to put things in perspective, and this quite frankly is really good news for your system, if you're looking at for your average customer, you're looking collectively there, that's about a, you know, 7.5, 7.6% increase over four years, that's less than 2% a year, that's less than inflation. While you are putting in place these new reoccurring program costs that were about $800,000 a year, and the capital projects to replace some of the aging infrastructure, you're able to do all of those things, and you're looking at an increase that's gonna average 2% a year over the next four years, that's really good. So same thing, this is the seven-block structure, if you stayed with it, I'm not gonna go through it in as much detail unless you would like to, but again, you're looking at very similar, it's about a 7% increase over that period, an increase of $2.23 in 2019, when the water rates are increased, and then in 2022, when the wastewater rates are increased, about $3. So again, on average, about 2% per year. What I wanted to do then was pull an example for a commercial customer, and this is our last example then, but for a commercial customer that's using 35,000 gallons of water and 30,000 gallons of wastewater, and again, if you're wondering why those numbers are slightly different, again, because folks will, especially residential, we have 11,000, 8,000, you'll have people that are irrigating, so what's being returned to the wastewater system is less than the water that you typically will use, since a good portion is going on your lawn for irrigation or your planting beds. So that's why we're using wastewater numbers slightly lower. So for a wastewater, for a commercial customer, at these volumes, right now, current rates, they're paying $246.45 per month for those volumes, and that rate would increase by $14.81 in 2019, or about 6%, and in 22, in 2022, on the wastewater side, it would go up about $14. Again, it's about 11.36%, again, over a four-year period there, you're looking at less than 3% per year on an increase. If you're wondering why the increase is a little more there for commercial versus residential, it's because the increase is on the volumetric rate, not the minimum bill, and so as you use more water, that's the piece that you're paying more per 1,000 gallons, and quite frankly, if you're gonna have a water system or a water wastewater utility that is encouraging water conservation, that's where you want the increases to be, is on the consumption side, not the minimum bill. This was a seven-block structure, again, it's very similar, so I'll go through that. And then my last slide are just some recommendations. So what we would propose or recommend to the city is that they consider implementing the rate increases with the four-block rate structure, which would have an increase in your water rates in fiscal year 2019 and an increase in your wastewater rates in 2022, and those are the only increases. We were also asked to look at, on the industrial side, the BOD, TSS, BOD stands for biochemical oxygen demand, TSS is total suspended solids, this is basically the stuff that goes in the sewage that comes out of, and what we're focused on industrial, this can be businesses, it can be restaurants, but what you do is you have in place a system where you sample, and then based on what the surcharges are above certain parameters, you have a surcharge in place. It's very common in the wastewater industry, because as there are heavy, heavier materials, there's more material in there per milligram, per liter of solution and all that, the wastewater treatment plant is designed to handle a normal flow of materials, if they start getting a lot more of different constituents that are a higher percentage, they have to treat that, it costs more, so you want the folks that are putting those in to pay a surcharge, again, very common within the industry. We are not recommending any change in the surcharge you have in place, and the reason for that, the way your surcharge is calculated, a portion of it is flow-based on that wastewater flows, so in 2022, if you increase your wastewater volumetric rates, which we're recommending, that follows through the algebraic formula, basically, and their surcharge will go up slightly. So bottom line, those are our recommendations, and I just wanna say, your water wastewater utility, from a financial standpoint, is really in good shape, that those are the type of modest increases we're talking about while they're putting in these new reoccurring budgets for capital projects, maintenance, is a really good story for the utility. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Hey, go ahead.
I have a technical question, would you go back three slides to the commercial four-tier? One more. Is that just a typo in wastewater on 19, 20, 21, and 20, 19, 20, and 21? Because you're saying you're not proposing an increase in the wastewater rate, and yet you're showing one, and I've lost you.
That is a very good point, and I wanna give you a compliment, because that is really paying attention to detail, so you get a, get an atta girl for that.
Geez, that's.
And, and with that said, no, it's not a typo, it's a really good point, though. One of the reasons for that, if you're going to the four-block structure, okay, from the seven-block, and again, I don't wanna bore you with this, but I'll show this to you, because you brought it up, and it's a really good catch, and it's really one of the challenges we dealt with, it's just basically, to give you an example, if you look at this, 3,000 to 7,000 is at $2.47, we'll just use 2018 as an example, well, or 2019, $2.47, okay? If you're going to four blocks, there's a little movement, so now the 3,000 to 10,000 is at 2.50, $2.50, so there's just a little movement of like 3 cents, which causes that. So what we're trying to do is, as you consolidate those blocks, have a rate that captures where those seven blocks were, but it's gonna be close, but there's gonna be a little difference, so that's.
That's actually your point on the four blocks, then.
Exactly.
Thank you.
So that's a very good catch.
Mr. Halapex, did you have something?
Well, this does address the recurring needs on water and wastewater, it doesn't address any of the storm sewer plans or stoppages we have there, or the things it need, those of course would come out of the general fund, I'm assuming, is that correct, Gilbert?
Yeah.
Water, uh, stormwater, stormwater system.
Yeah.
The repairs would come out of general fund?
Streets.
Yeah.
Streets.
All right, thank you. You talk, we moved a lot of this cost to the wastewater fund.
Storm, storm.
Storms.
He's talking stormwater, we're not addressing stormwater in this project.
Okay, I'm sorry. Currently, right now, it's the general fund, whatever, maintenance and everything else, my apology, that's correct, but that's a future study we wanna look into, aside of this itself.
We could take care of some of the stormwater runoff through this fund going forward.
And that'd be, and our proposal, something like that, was that we isolate that operation itself and have it stand-alone operation, where it funds itself, maintain itself, have capital improvements on itself, something like the water wastewater operation. Does that make you answer?
Sure.
Okay, thank you, sorry for the misunderstanding.
And I would just add, that is, you know, hurricanes tend to have that impact on municipalities, we have some other folks that are looking at stormwater utilities, what needs to be done from an O and M standpoint and a capital planning standpoint, and setting that up as a separate utility, this is just the water wastewater, but, yep.
Dave.
I do think we're planning on talking about that when we hit the budget work sessions, some ideas.
Very good.
Because we've been internally talking about how to handle them.
All of it needs to be addressed, it's just where you're gonna find it.
On, on slide six, I just have to clarify, that's, I should say debt service, I just kinda, I'm a stickler for that, all of that's debt service, that's not debt.
Correct.
Okay, I understand.
They should say debt service, you are correct.
I don't ever want it to be misleading, and I, I know, though, you're looking at, you know, cash flow, basically, and revenues, and I get it, but, so that's just the debt service. I'm curious about one thing, the wastewater increase in 2022, 2022, why did you not just split that and do half of it in 21 and half, because when I look at the overages and underages, it just makes sense to me.
Yep. So there, the reason for that, and let me get there.
If there is a, I mean.
Yeah, well, and so it, it's a good question, and one of the things we always say on rate design, there, quite frankly, there's infinite ways to do that, you could say, okay, we wanna do it over two years or three years, we could say, we wanna do, just say, a quarter of what we need, 25% of what we need in 2021, and the remainder in 2022, or split it 50/50. The reason we did it with one increase is that we always talk with our clients and how they like to have rate increases incorporated, and typically, what we have found, the vast majority of our clients like to have is, for instance, if you're looking out here over a, a four-year period, five-year, including this year, and not doing anything, if you can have two increases in the next four years versus three increases, you can then say, you know, we're doing an increase in 2019, we have no increases in 2021, and then an increase in 2022, so increases in two out of the four years. If you wanted to do a, break it, and do half of it in, say, 2021 and 2022, you can absolutely do that.
I'm sure, I'm sure staff will, if they wanted to, really felt strongly about that, would recommend, I understand the psychology of it, though, yeah, we don't wanna appear to raise rates every single year, okay?
It's a good look ahead, but what worries me about it is that wastewater looks fine until 2022, and I don't know how many of us are gonna be sitting up here in 2022, and we can't bind future councils to adopt a rate structure. I don't know how to, how to keep this fresh on the minds of council, future councils.
Well, if we start treating this kinda like we do the CIP.
That's correct.
Program, and, and like, you know, mentioned, this would be a rolling five-year program, so I think that will keep it fresh in front of councils, that, that's the plan going forward, is we'll just present this.
If I might add also, and I'll do, is that our intent was that, city manager is correct, is that this is an opportunity that maybe we're looking, do a maybe a five-year budget, and every year, we visit these things as we go, and keep in mind, today, we have a snapshot, what you're seeing here, next year, there's gonna probably be some modifications, so it's, it's no different than we're doing with our CIP, every year, we refresh it moving forward, make a presentation, Argos do the same thing with this, is an opportunity to take an operation and have a five-year forecast, and I say that's toward the target, because that target might be moved every year, and each year, you have to have the ability to adjust and adapt as you go. And of course, as you all well know, the economy has an effect too, when dictates the situation has occurred, so we have to modify, but at least we're able to establish a plan and moving forward, that's the whole purpose of this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, my question is, is it going to be presented every year at the same time with the CIP list, so that way we have it fresh in our mind, because that would help.
That's, that's the goal.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Great.
I think that'd be a good idea as well, yeah, we need to be reminded that we do have these things, it needs to be taken care of.
And, and looking forward, also, go back to Mr. Halapex's comment on the, I get confused when they say, it's the stormwater on the street, same thing there, if we get to that point, we're gonna have that same type of a strategy in place for that operation, too.
Okay, that sounds great.
So it's, it's, I think it's a great tool for council to look forward, for council to staff, plan, and just move forward, it's a target, it doesn't say that's what's gonna happen, at least that's the target you wanna hit.
It gives us a plan to, to address it, I think it's a good plan, I like the simplification, going to a four-rate instead of seven, anytime you make it simple and easy for people to understand, I think that's a positive, these are good, sound recommendations.
And I know Ms. Garrett's probably, gonna say this, if you are, I'm ahead of the curve, Ken.
I suspect I'm fixing to say what you're fixing to say.
And now, the whole purpose of this is to give council a start, kinda look at, this is what's happening now, and then, but there's no decision-making here, but the whole objective is that, we got a work session coming up in August, I mean, August, I wish, it's in June. But at that time, it's when I, I think we need to roll up our sleeves, okay, what's your vision, what, what do you feel comfortable, what do you wanna do? And keep one thing in mind, ladies and gentlemen, this report address, this plan, I call it, address future increase in reoccurring cost operation, moving from a, I call it a, oh, we gotta pump out, let's go fix it, this is moving towards a more proactive, ahead-of-time maintenance, where you're keeping the system up and going, ready, ready to go, so you're not always putting out fires here and there, or we're structured within a budget, currently, that's what we're doing right now, honestly, we have a rate structure, we generate X dollars, and we have X expenses, and we try to make it fit with that, and okay, maybe we can skip this year and not do this, so this kinda changed the whole dynamic in itself. So in Au, in June, I keep wanting to say August, but it's, it's the time to start, yeah, we wanna move forward, or we don't wanna move forward, or we wanna modify, we can modify, as Dave was mentioning, but keep in mind, this is asking, asking you that we wanna do this, but with the content that we're adding new reoccurring costs, new programs, it's not that we wanna increase because we need the revenue, it's just if we want these type of proactive approach, and also, as, as David alluded to in his conversation, presentation, we're increasing our water and sewer capital line replacement over the years, we're going from a normal $1.3 million to maybe, to about $1.7, you know, so that's really going aggressively trying to replace these water utility lines, and not hopefully throw the dice and maybe it can last another year, or accumulate money and then replace it, so this is taking a more proactive approach. So it's not something that we gotta do, but it's, but it's something that'd be nice to do, if council's willing to go move forward with these proactive programs and maintenance and operations, so it goes hand in hand.
And it's our recommendation.
And it's our recommendation.
And it's our recommendation.
Thank you.
The last thing, if I may, I went and looked at the 2017 TML water wastewater rate survey, and your rates, even the proposed with the 2019 water rates going in, when you compare to 2017, your, they do a calculation on 5,000 gallons of consumption, your average bill is significantly under what the average is, their average bill for all the cities they surveyed came out to like $66.13, your average bill for 5,000 gallons, water and wastewater, so not what I showed you up there, you come in at $55.14, so significantly below the average, so that's, again, with those programs in there, so that's some good news.
And part of that was done by people that came before us, that had the foresight to do some of the things that have been done, the ASR is one that's real recent, the off-channel storage is another, buying up water rights to the river, those are all very positive, that are reflecting the rates that our citizens pay.
Yep.
I was about to.
Nobody thought about it at the time, but we do now.
I was about to agree with that, Dave, you've, you're probably the only person in this room that's looked at water rates and systems at so many communities, and I had to chuckle earlier, you were very complimentary, I was, I was gonna wonder if we paid his bill already, but you're sincere, and what you, that example's great, I appreciate that, because I think this is one of the most under-appreciated assets cities and communities have, and I'm not being critical of the citizens, they just don't, you just turn the tap and it comes out, and.
Well, and the problem, yeah, your assets are all underground, the only stuff you see are some elevated storage tanks, and that's it.
Yeah.
So it's.
And I know we used to, it's been a few years when we talked about, because we served on that committee together in Austin, but there's a lot of examples out there that are not this good, there's some problems out there, so I do appreciate councils and staff that have gone before us, does somebody over here have a question? Okay, thank you, sir.
Just to remind council, so when we come back, June 25th, 26th, we'd like to know whether you want to move forward with these recommendations or stay the course as we are, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Let's do it, Rick, we have a couple things, we need to circle back on the minutes, Ms. Elise, you had found a correction?
Yes, I wasn't here last time, and there was something there that said that I had voted on it, so I just wanted to correct that.
And Mr. Mayor.
Do we need to?
Yes, I've got, there's two different processes under the rules that we could use to go back and amend that, since we've already voted it, on it, the simplest would be to entertain a motion to suspend the rules, which would allow us to jump right back into that without having to go through the steps of, the long way around is to do a motion to reconsider, and then a new vote on the motion, and then an amendment to that motion, and then, so that's a nine-step process, the short process is only four steps, but it begins with a motion to suspend the rules.
Will we do it next, at the next meeting? Will we do it next, at the next meeting?
It's easier if we do it today.
Okay, so we would need a motion, let's do the short one, a motion to suspend the rules.
I'm hoping that we suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay, and then, we got a motion second.
We need a, a supermajority vote to suspend the rules, so it requires two-thirds vote, which is five members.
All those in favor to suspend the rules, so that we can correct the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same, okay.
And then, we can jump straight into the vote to amend, to adopt minutes without Ms. Solis's name mentioned in those voting aye.
There needs to be a change, because Ms. Halapex wasn't here either. And it's on, on the last one, correct?
Okay.
On 2018.
2018.
Okay, on 2018, 53R.
Yeah, it's on there, too.
Both Ms. Solis's name and Mr. Halapaska's name are included. They were absent that night, so their names simply need to be removed.
So we need to, I need to entertain a motion.
We can, we've suspended the rules, we can simply vote on that.
Oh, okay. Okay, so the corrections are, you two are absent, and it needs to reflect that, that's it?
Just on that one. Just on that one resolution, yeah.
Everybody's clear, we don't need a motion or a second. And so I'll call for the vote now, nothing else. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same, okay. Ayes have it, so they've been corrected. We're good. Three steps?
Well, there was a second in there. I counted the second as a step.
Yeah, he did. Um, you didn't do your, as part of this.
I can, yes, yes, yes.
You want to do it at the end?
We have to reinstate it.
Do we need to reinstate it and all this?
I just, okay, and before we, we get into this lovely document here.
Yes.
Ms. Garrett has some comments about the generators. Is this some updates for everybody?
Sure, and you'll notice that there's not any generators in the CIP program. And Mr. Blakenite asked last time, and I kind of alluded to it. What we're recommending that we do is, and you'll have it on the May 15th agenda with a resolution, is to buy the generator for the raw water pump station, because that's the area that it's, it's most peculiar or particular to get a generator dropped in there. And so we're recommending going ahead and buying that, and not waiting on any mitigation funding, so we can start site preparation. The generator still won't be in during the hurricane season, but we can get the site work done and be able to put a rental in there quickly if we end up in that cone of uncertainty, as we, if we have a hurricane out, and we're in that cone of uncertainty. So we're recommending that. The other three generators that we plan to do, permanent generators at the surface water treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant, the regional on, on, out on Fox, and then Plant 3, which is our booster station, we're going to apply for a mitigation grant on that. We have submitted a notice of intent to apply for the grant. Then the state will come back and let us know, yes, they're interested in those grant opportunities. Then we will fill out the application, but what they're telling John is that they should have decisions made by early, what, October, fall? And so we'll know then whether we have received the grants. If not, then we'll come back and move forward with a lease option that we've been working on with Power Secure.
Yep. To be clear, on the raw water pump station, you're going to go ahead and do the site work. So that way, if, is there going to be some way to drive up onto that, if we had to deliver a generator? I guess that anthill's going to get bigger.
Donald, Donald can tell you how that's going to look.
The anthill won't necessarily get bigger, but what we can do is, if we have the site work done, and the pad is prepped, and we, we have some time, we can easily coordinate the delivery of the generator and a crane come out to set it. It, it wouldn't be a problem, we could get that done easily. And the road has already been improved, so we have plenty of space out there for that, for that crane to come out.
Okay, and there's enough space on the top? You just flatten it and put a concrete pad in there already, and be ready for it, or?
I haven't seen the exact plans on that, but yeah, it'll, it'll be, it'll, it'll be taken care of. It'll, it'll have enough space to put a, a generator on.
All right, can you do it in enough time?
I think we get the site, I think we get the site work done, you know.
We had five hours left in time, I think, so.
Oh, no, I, I go back to, if we are in that cone of uncertainty, probably 72 hours out, we're going to drop a generator in there. We'll take a risk on whether we'll get reimbursed for that, but I think it's a risk worth taking, just in case our redundant system fails at the surface water treatment plant, you know. That's, that we're going to avoid that, so.
Well, that's a, that's a separate system.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that we'll have, we're not, you know, like we, I'm sorry.
Oh, you were talking about the wells, yeah, in case the wells, yeah.
And we've, Donald's done a good job, they, we can, we're testing the groundwater wells every month, pushing water back, you know, to the point where, except it's not going into the treatment system.
Actually, with the, with the, with the free chlorine that we were, we were using this past month, we were able to put a certain amount of actual groundwater into those, those tanks, as long as you don't go over that TCQ 20% limit. And we did that, and it was successful.
And we'll notify TCQ, if we haven't already, that we plan to exercise that option if we need to, in the event we.
We've talked to TCQ about it, and the only thing we have to do is give them a call. And then that's, that's all that really needs to be done.
So we've done everything we can to hedge on any possibilities, but, you know, hopefully, council will support going ahead and buying that raw water and not waiting on mitigation funding. And it's approximately 200 and something thousand?
I don't remember exactly, it's about 275, something right there, including site work and everything.
Turnkey.
Turnkey.
Okay.
Okay, so that's why you don't see anything in the CIP regarding generators.
Okay.
Are you ready to start the CIP conversation?
Sure.
That's what you came for tonight, right?
One other thing while, while we're there, it just dawned on me. When we first went in that building at the raw water pump station, there's a bunch of water on the floor. Need to look at somehow, because no one wanted to stand in that water and mess with the gear that was in there. If there's some way, I don't know where it came from, if it's probably wind-driven. If I had to guess through those doors, but we just need to make sure those doors are good and secure.
Okay.
He's turned it off.
I always do that.
Usually my pencil gets stuck in the water.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I appreciate the opportunity to come in and talk about our update to our FY 2018 capital improvements program. Not seeing my, there it is.
Donald, are you going to pause? This will be posted on the website?
If it's not already.
Okay, it should be, okay.
Yeah, I'd ask them to do it close to 5:00 o'clock.
Okay.
They were going to try to get it done.
Okay, so for the public.
Okay, I see it now, it just wasn't showing up. Okay, so tonight, we're going to take a little bit of different approach than what y'all are used to. What I like to do is, is kind of go over our rec, our recommended changes for 2018 through 2022. After that, come in and talk about the 2023 additions, which is a new CIP planning window. Go over some of the alternative projects and other needs, other, some of those projects that we, we don't want to forget about. We want to get them out there in front of you, so you, you don't forget about them. Then we'll have time for discussion and questions, of course, if there's any, at any time, if you have a question, stop me and, and feel free to ask it. And at the end, we, we will be looking for consensus from you on the changes to 2018, and specifically, moving forward into 2019. With that being said, the, you know, the projects that are out there, 2020 through 2023, this is just a plan. And like any plan, you know, things change. We may have, you know, priorities change, or maybe unforeseen events happen, so, you know, those, those years out, 2020, 2023 are a lot more flexible. So let's go ahead and jump on in to reviewing our recommended changes. In 2018, we have two items that we'd like to discuss with you. The first one of those is moving the reconstruction of Phase 2 of Nursery Drive between Tropo Acres and Loop 463 from 2021 into 2018. Y'all have already approved us to do that project in 2018, although we haven't brought it before you, the contract before you. But since we had a little bit of leftover sales tax money, it kind of made sense to try to do this project at one time, do Phase 1 and Phase 2 together. Saves a little bit of money, and it also reduces inconvenience to those residents over there. This will be basically reconstructing it as it is right now, two-lane open ditch asphalt section, about $350,000. Street rating over there is an 80. If you haven't driven down it, it's, it's rapidly deteriorating.
And Donald, you're going to try to get that bid and done before school?
We would like to start that as soon as we can in the summer. We're, I believe, we're going to try to bring the, the budget amendment to you on the 15th. And then it won't be long after that, we'll try to start getting, getting the project out, get bids on it.
That's your goal, is to get it done before school starts back?
I don't know that we'll get it done before school gets back, but we're going to try to as, as soon as we can. We're going to work on it as fast as we can.
Donald?
Yes, sir.
You said that's a reconstruction?
In, in some areas on that road, it's, it's flaking off, I guess, the width has gone away.
Right.
On the edges.
Yes, yes, sir.
Is there any thought to increasing that width?
I don't know that we have the, the right-of-way there to increase it out. I'm not sure, we can look at that during the design, but you've got the railroad on one side, and they're real particular about their right-of-way.
Oh, boy, are they.
And then you drop off into the ditch on the other side, and you get real close to some, some homes and some driveways over there, so. But we'll, we'll look at it, we'll try to make it as wide as possible.
It's mostly a drainage issue, though, is that correct?
That may be part of the problem over there. I don't think we're going to address drainage, though. We're not, we're not addressing drainage in that, in that project.
Man, thank you.
And I'm sure there's kids walking along there, too.
Right.
There's just, it's an, that's in either a $348,000 project, or a $3 million project, if you tried to pipe it and curb and gutter it, and there's no way.
We can get expensive as you want, yes, sir.
Yeah, I know, I know, it's, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
Not too long ago, we talked about cutting part of it off, because of all the cut-through.
Right.
Anyway.
Okay. The second item we have for you is a Navarro sidewalk project that was originally slated for 2019. This was $50,000 funded out of the Sales Tax Development Corporation. We'd like to move that project into 2018, and rather than use a sales tax development money, or sales tax money, we'd like to use some leftover seal coat money to get this project done. That's basically filling some sidewalk gaps in various locations on Navarro Street between Airline and Rio Grande. I have $50,000 on here, but I believe we've got some quotes, and that's a little closer to $68,000. But we do have that leftover seal coat money, we will be bringing that to you, I believe, on the 15th.
That's on the 15th.
Okay. So that's all the changes we have for 2018. There's no questions when we move into 2019? So in 2019, we're looking to do a lot of sidewalk projects. The first one is a curb ramp sidewalk project on Rio Grande. And this is a construct sidewalks and ADA ramps on that corridor between Rent and Ben Wilson. The overall project is $1.1 million. 80% of that will be funded by Tech dot. Cities match is $227,000. Another good thing about this project is that Tech dot designs it and constructs it. We just basically give them 20%.
It's much needed.
Yes. Another project, very similar project, actually the exact same program, is, again, sidewalks and ADA ramps along Navarro Street in between Airline and Crestwood. Again, this is another Tech dot-funded project. Total project is one point, a little over a million. Cities match is $214,000, or 20%. I keep losing this mouse on here, here we go. Next project is a Navarro median utility improvement project. As y'all are aware, Tech dot will be installing medians on 463, where they end, all the way down to Airline. At the same time, they're going to be blacktopping, hot mix paving that, that same section. We have, in the section between Country Club and then just past, just south of Mockingbird, we have some very old water and sewer lines built, put in there during the late 50s, early 60s. We've had some breaks on those water lines, caused a lot of damage, and rather than them, Tech dot come in and put a pretty new street and pretty medians on there, and then us have to destroy them with a water blowout, water main blowout. We want to go in there and, and fix those water lines now, water and sewer lines now. That project is estimated to be about $750,000.
How long would a project like that take?
I'm thinking three, six months, six months total. Yeah.
Six months on Navarro. How many lanes of traffic are you going to close? One, just one, I hope. It, it, I'm just curious.
The reason I'm just saying, six months is to get some, to get the planning. There may be a period where it's two months, or, or a month, and then they come back and do the water line. It's just, it can, can vary, because of the, you got to cut the street either way.
Can you just do it by that one far lane closure, closure, I hope? Last time, when it collapsed, was it just one lane closed? I can't remember.
We had two. We're going to, we're going to do our best, believe, with coordination with Tech dot, mitigate the lane closures. They encourage as many open as we can, and we do too.
I don't suppose we could end up with the median in that area at the same time, just in terms of shutting down the traffic at least number of times?
Well, Tech dot's going to repave. So it saves us from having to repave, obviously. But we would hate for them to repave, and then have to tear up to put the water and sewer lines in.
Well, we got to put it back.
That really makes us look foolish.
We'll, we'll work in conjunction with Tech dot to make it as painless as possible, but there are going to be some, some lane closures, there's no way to, no way to get around it.
You know, that's going to take place after they do the median from 463 up to, right there?
Our plan is to get that done before. We want to have that work done, so that they, after we've got the pipes set back in, and the, and the road temporary repaired, they'll come back in and pave right over that.
So that they won't do it in the reverse order, we'll be, we're not coming in after that?
Yeah, we, we don't, that's, that's what we're trying to avoid, is have to tear that up after they pave.
So you're saying that you want them to do the whole project from the loop all the way down to Mockingbird at one time, Tech dot?
No, we'll, we'll do the repairs to this water line, that, that'll be on us.
The medium, I'm talking about the medium, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, the median, they'll come in, I'm not sure how they'll build that, but I know they'll, they're going to come in. Hopefully, the plan would be for us to do our work first, and then come in behind us and do their work.
Okay. I was thinking about all the street closures back and forth, like Mascotta.
Yeah, there's, again, we'll try to make it as painless as possible, but there will be some, there will be some inconveniences, no doubt about it.
It'll be nice when it's done.
It'll be great when it's done.
But then we'll hit the holidays, and then you're going to have traffic on Navarro.
I like water, so, I like water, so I hope we get it done, because I want clean water.
Okay.
Okay. The final project we have in 2019, we've already brought this to you before, is the, the Water Tower Number 6 project. Again, that was originally slated to be done with the water wastewater funds in 2018. Because of the unforeseen advancement of the I-69 corridor, we had to spend some of that money towards getting those, our utilities moved out of their, out of their project area. We are funding about $130,000 worth of the engineering design out of the water wastewater, so we're wanting to push the, the rehab back to 20, to 2019, about $870,000.
Donald, before you move on to 2020, since we're kind of needing decisions on 19, you only really talked about the changes.
Right.
But behind their tab, in 19 are all the planned, the seal coat projects, utilities in North Heights. So if there's any questions on 19, I mean.
Yeah, if you have any questions about any of the projects on any of these years as we move through, feel free to stop me, and we can flip over and talk about them.
I've got a 2019 question on the down, downtown business district overlay project.
Okay.
Okay, so that says mill, hot mix overlay, and install ADA compliant ramps on North. You can see what it says. It includes Main Street from Rio Grande down Aways.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
So Main Street is very bumpy?
Right.
And so does mill and hot mix overlay, is that sufficient?
Right, it is. Yeah, when, when you're done with that hot mix overlay, it'll be a, a flat, smooth riding surface.
Okay, it'll be a flat riding surface, but will it be like a turtle shell?
Oh, no, you're talking about.
And flat on top of a turtle shell?
No, it'll, it'll still have that crown. You need the, they may take some of the crown out, but you still need that crown for drainage. You want that water to shed off the road into the gutters.
I agree that there has to be some crown, but it just, it seems, and because I drive it quite often, it, it does this as well, and I, I know that milling would take some of it, but will it take that much?
The milling will take some of that down, yes, ma'am. But there will be, there will be some left, it still has to crown.
So a rebuild isn't necessary?
No, not a full, not a full rebuild.
Okay, okay. Well, that's good, then.
So all those streets have a rating of 80, correct?
Average, average rating of 80. That's an average street rating for that, for those areas that are in blue, that's an average street rating.
So the areas she's talking about could actually be lower, a lower rating?
Um, not necessarily, I mean, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be, yeah, it could be, it could be higher or lower. Um, not necessarily. I mean, it's a, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, yeah, it could be, it could be higher or lower. It's gonna be depending on the width of the road and how bumpy it is and uh, if there's alligator cracking. Or if, it, it is a whole number of, of things that give it that rating.
Hey Donald, while we're talking about it, I know that there's some, some seal coat projects. Uh, we talked about seal coating uh, previously.
Okay.
And had some issues with it and I know we've, I think we've changed the aggregate size.
Yes.
Uh, has that led to a better quality and better uh, resident satisfaction?
I believe, I believe it's, it's led to a better quality. You're, you're taking a, a larger sized rock. And then coming back in with a smaller rock and pressing it in and it just makes a, makes a smoother pavement, a smoother riding surface. You know, I, it, it's a, it's a maintenance program only. It's not gonna be a, like a hot mixed street. But I believe it's, it's come a long way from what we, our first attempt.
What's the um, is there a monetary difference between a ultra smooth road, which people clamor for? But um, what, what's the difference between what we're doing now and, and, and something like that?
It's about.
Just from a mileage standpoint and a cost and what could be done or what can't be done?
Yeah, uh, a hot mix overlay street costs about twenty-two dollars and twenty cents per square yard. A double seal is about ten dollars and the double seal is what we're doing. So you can see it's, it's, it's over twice as much to do a hot mix overlay. So for example, you know, we've got uh, one of the seal coat projects for twenty nineteen is uh, North Crest. And you know, that project, if you do it as a double seal is just over two million dollars. If you do it as a hot mix overlay, it's four point five million dollars. And then if you look at the life of that street, you know, if you just, take it as a, as a brand new rebuild, like you re, you rebuilt that street. And you did the maintain, the fifty year maintenance program like we've, we've talked to you before. It goes from twenty-six million dollars over the life of that pro, of that street to maintain it. To thirty-six million dollars over fifty years. So it's, if you, if you don't do the double seal, instead you do hot mix overlay, by the time you're gonna do a double seal, it adds to ten million dollars.
Do they both last about the same si- uh, amount of time?
Yeah, it, it's gonna be recommended that you do some sort of, you've got to do some sort of maintenance. You know, uh, an overlay, a seal of some sort about every seven years. So, yeah, they're, they last about the same amount of time. The, the difference is, the difference is ride quality is, is what it is.
No, I just wanted to at least have the exercise and, and talk about options and, and leave that, I guess, for us to decide whether.
Yeah, absolutely.
Better product and, or.
Y'all, and y'all got this spreadsheet, I think, right? Yeah.
There, there's also um, another aspect of, from the citizen standpoint. Of these, uh, the seal coat. And I, I talked to Ms. Garrett a little this morning and she accurately said this, what I'm about to say is really a budget question. More than a capital improvements pr- question, but it's related. And that is uh, street sweeping.
Right.
Because the, when they do the seal coat, the contractor comes back in our contract and does street sweeping. And I believe comes back a second time.
Right, there's, there's two sweepings.
Or that's what we're working toward or, is that?
That's in the current contract though. He's gonna do two sweepings.
That's in the current contract. They do two sweepings.
He's gonna do sweepings of the area that we have just done the seal coat.
Right.
If you've got an adjoining neighborhood or if you've got an adjoining street, there is going to be bleed over of that. What do you call it?
The shelling.
Shelling.
Aggregate.
Uh, into the adjoining neighborhoods, which is first gonna, you know, kick up on cars and windshield. But I'm also wondering what it does to the streets as we're driving over that aggregate. That may not be a problem. It may be more a cosmetic problem.
Yeah.
But again, the sweeping in those adjoining neighborhoods is not something the contractor's responsible for. And as we've looked at our budget of street sweeping, and that's been an area that we've been able to, to be pretty frugal in. Think that we've got an unintended consequence of our aggressive chip ceiling. That we really need to look at. And I'm, I'm bringing it up to make sure that everybody follows it and this is a time to, to think about that aspect. Did I lose you all?
No.
I'd like to go back to something Dr. Young said. Uh, you know, we believe the um, seal coat is an excellent maintenance product. Uh, the hot mix, we don't believe that hot mix is any better as a sealant. It's just that little smoother ride that the residents like, but we, we do believe, staff believes that that seal coat's an excellent.
When you think about double the amount of maintenance.
Yes.
That, that's, that's where it comes in. So, I just wanted to point that out for, for, for us and for everybody watching as well.
But it goes back to, uh, you know, we've always said, uh, our job is to try to propose projects within the dollar amounts that we have budgeted. If council wishes to do away with the two coat, uh, the seal coat, uh, the two core seal coat and go more to a hot mix for maintenance. Under our current revenue structure that we have, Donald's explanation of North Crest. Instead of getting it done within a year, it's gonna take us probably two, two and a half years to get that project done. So it, it, it becomes a, you know, revenue funding source.
I have a question, Donald.
Yes, sir.
And you can correct me. For some of the streets that were, that are being done right now, being worked on downtown area. Like Santa Rosa, weren't they concrete, cement instead of asphalt?
I believe that some of them may have concrete under them. I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I, I believe that, I believe there are some.
Especially Santa Rosa, cuz uh, I did get some phone calls.
It may have concrete under it, but the surface, we seal coated no streets that had concrete surfaces. They were all asphaltic surfaces.
Yeah, they were paved over probably years.
There are still some concrete streets though.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of streets that have concrete several layers underneath, you know, hot mix and, and seal coat, yes, sir.
How do you resurface concrete?
There's multiple ways. You can, you can put a, you can put a hot mix, oh, depending on, depending on how they're uh. Uh, if the panels are lifted, you may have to do some level up. But then you still have to come in, but if, if you do a hot mix overlay, you're still gonna have to come in and put some sort of a seal coat. For a binding agent to get that hot mix on there.
So as we talk about these capital improvement updates, or capital improvements projects, that's something that we need to consider. What's on there right now, but before just given the uh, seal of approval.
Right.
Well, Santa Rosa had a seal coat on it to start with.
Yes.
So we just went back over it with a.
Was it a seal can or was it a hot mix?
Hot mix.
I, I think.
It wasn't concrete.
No, no, it wa- it was paved. It wasn't concrete pavement. It was a, it was a, of some sort.
It had pavers, like when we were really little, we'd go down there. I thought it was like concrete pavers, like bricks.
On Santa Rosa?
Uh-huh.
Further down it was.
Yeah, I thought so.
I'm gonna go dig and find out. That's interesting.
I'm just thinking. Right, that's where it was, like in the old, yeah, the old section.
Wait, wait, we gotta back up there. You used to ride your horse on it, Mr. Delacour? I'm sorry, I, I heard you say that. That's, that's interesting. We'll talk about that later.
I noticed, uh, just an observation that um, it, budgets in the past, we'd have point repair.
Right.
I don't see any point repair.
We, we still have point repair in our, in our projects, absolutely.
Okay.
It's in the contracts.
It seems it was just slightly different.
There's a quantity for them.
Okay.
Um, but we still do point repairs.
For, for edification for the general public, point repair would be like, you come up near a stoplight where the big trucks turn and tears up around the corner. If we fix that properly and before we do our overlay or seal coating or whatever, it'll last a lot longer. You don't need to do the whole street, just certain points. And whether it's high wear, usually it's stoplights or, you know, corners and whatnot like that.
Not to be.
Towards increasing.
Not to beat a dead horse, but um, you know, the seal coat, it, what the city manager said is very important and very accurate. This fits the revenue we have. Um, if you look at the example that was emailed out to us, uh, every seven years. You know, it's, the city, excuse me, the street is sealed. You know, hot mix is the ultimate uh, wear surf, riding surface. We're not doing that. We're sealing them. This is seal coat. Of course, it requires the use of aggregate.
Yeah.
To uh, not make a mess. So it, it wears in, you know, every seven years, you do, you do one of these. Theoretically, it wears in in about six to eight months. And I, I have to commend Brennan, um, they're paying more attention. Uh, my neighborhood, and I know, Mr. Bucknutt, you're down the street, I was completely impressed. Now, I think they may have done the second coat today and I've been home to see it. First coat, I thought, I was amazed at how well they did that. And yes, it's a little uh, rougher. I had one constituent worry that people are gonna trip over those rocks. That's, I got that text, okay, so I won't say who. But um, you know, it, it's incumbent upon the seven of us to help understand why we do what we do. There's not a one of us up here that would, would not rather have hot mix, but we can't afford it. Now, if they wanna, we wanna raise the tax rate ten cents or fifteen cents, but probably don't wanna do that either. This is a great solution that we started in what, twenty thirteen, when that was put together?
You adopted it, our first year of actually doing it was budget year fifteen.
Okay.
Adopted it late thirteen.
Wanna make sure council understands that, that just because hot mix itself is a very porous surface. So if you just put it down, water's gonna go right there. On a hot mix street, you still have to do a single seal. You're always gonna have to do a seal. No matter what.
Lose your base, you lose it.
That's right, absolutely.
That's why that, say, if you, you get in a pattern like me, I know, you know, the same potholes as I do. One pothole opens up and we patch that same pothole every year because the base is gone and it continues to collapse. It's so annoying, you know, so anyway.
And it, it's the base we're trying to protect and, and that's been something I've been hesitant to grasp. But it's the, the level base that we're trying to protect. So that as we drive down these streets, we're not driving down potholes. We're driving on a level street that may not be a hot mix, nice, smooth street. But it stays level so that all the folks that have back problems and all kinds of other things. Don't, you know, they're able to drive on a level street and that's what we're preserving so that we don't have to rebuild the street.
Yes, ma'am.
But in this seal coat process, there's not uh, any part of it in there, uh, of that project that is a level up or anything.
We do, we do try to level some up.
There's a Big Dip right at Whispering Creek in Country Club that wasn't touched. And.
Uh, that's gonna be a contractor call on whether they think they can, they can even level it up. You know, sometimes, sometimes they can and sometimes they, they can. I'll, I'll use uh, Tanglewood. We went over to Tanglewood and did some level up work and there's some areas that they just couldn't do. There's just no way to do them. But what, what they could do, they, they did a level up on.
I'm just gonna tell Mr. Bucknutt, it's on purpose to slow him down. I do know what you're talking about.
Traffic calming device.
It's not, yeah.
Well, but, I, I mean, that, to me, that's part of, if we're going to be maintaining. Maintenance, this is maintenance, maintaining the streets. Where, where is the flexibility um, to look at those other, those more troublesome areas? The areas that need to be addressed. Uh, is it just a contractor call or do we have any say in?
If there's an area that, that we think needs to be addressed or, or, or y'all think needs to be addressed. We can always ask the contractor to give us a price for, while you're in there, what would it cost to, to, to dig that out? And then set it back in and then we'll, we'll uh, do a double seal over it. But again, that's additional cost and additional time. Part of the beauty of the, of the maintenance program is the street itself is in a decent shape. It may have a little bit of undulation, it may have some low spots, some high spots, but overall, the driving surface is in decent shape. Seal coat is maintenance out, get in there, get out and, and keep it, keep it good for another seven years. That's, that's what the whole point of that is. It's not really designed to take all those rough spots out.
Case by case, point repairs, if you have something. And that's why, I guess it's important, look at these CIP projects. So next year, before all that stuff starts, if you got a spot, let them know. You know, right? That's what I'm hearing.
Uh, if, if there's a particular spot that y'all know of or you're getting calls on, let us know. We go out and we drive them, but we, we don't always. What we think is bad and what a constituent think is bad may be two different things.
Yeah, I know exactly where.
Usually is.
I know exactly where to take the coffee out of the coffee. It's just gonna go everywhere.
And our citizens expect us to know that and expect us to fix it and so they don't say anything because they wait. Cuz they're out there working right now. They should fix it and then we're gone. Uh, you know, that's.
The ver- the burden of being on council, that burden of explaining, but.
But you know, also those, some of those types of things like that don't have to wait till a project. I mean, uh, if we're aware of those, we can address those with in-house, in-house staff. We can, we, we do those small patches and repairs, road failures. So if y'all know of them, let us know.
Is that transition we just fixed at Glasgow?
Yes.
We were having problems with that transition there. Um, we went in and fixed it, so. I think we've got to remember the seal coat is a maintenance.
Absolutely.
That's all it is. It's a maintenance. It's not a rebuild. It's just a maintenance.
Trying to keep good, good for another seven years is what it is.
Okay, with that being said, so higher traveled roads, i.e. the downtown area streets. Are they gonna take the seal coat and hold the seal coat, coat as well as a lower traveled uh, neighborhood street?
Um, I think the answer is that is yes, because the speed is, is relatively about the same. You know, you may have a little bit more traffic, but your, your speed is, is typically about the same. Your turning motions are, are, are at the same speed. Uh, you don't have just a whole lot of heavy, heavy traffic, heavy truck traffic coming through the downtown. It's, it's still very similar to, to residential, uh, even though it's in the downtown district. Right. What year were we on?
Twenty twenty.
Twenty fifty.
Okay, well, twenty twenty's ea- real easy. Uh, what we're recommending here is just to remove a placeholder for an unidentified sidewalk project. I don't have a map for it because we never identified what we wanted to do. With all the projects that we're doing, sidewalk projects in twenty nineteen, we thought, let's go ahead and put that fifty thousand back in and use it somewhere else. Um, moving over to twenty twenty-one, um.
I thought he said twenty twenty was the Ball Airport sidewalk?
No, twenty twenty, no.
I think twenty-one is Ball Airport.
Okay, got that correct.
No.
We don't, we don't have a Ball Airport sidewalk project.
Yes, we do.
Do we do?
General, we do. It's a general sidewalk project.
Oh, gen- okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
I'm, I'm sorry, that, that was one that was already, uh, had already been approved just as a general sidewalk and we're gonna do it.
For what year?
I think it's.
Is it twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty.
Thank you.
Trying to make sure I understood it as well.
All right. You wanna move, you wanna look at that one?
Yes, it's twenty twenty.
There is it.
Here it is. Four foot sidewalk, sidewalk along Ball Airport Road between Tyne and Glasgow, fifty thousand dollars.
And I'm, I know that you've got Leary Lane as an alternate and we'll talk about that in a little bit, but I keep watching the prices of things. And the Leary Lane one you got estimated up a lot more is, is that because Ball Airport is curb and gutter and already there?
No, Ball Airport's not curb and gutter, um.
But why is there such a difference in price?
It's a, it's a much shorter section, much shorter section.
There's not a scale, so.
And there's almost no crossings.
There's not any.
There's no.
Storm drain issues either.
Storm drain issues, there's no driveway crossings. It's just pretty much.
Okay.
Form it and go, form it forward and go. Okay, moving in twenty twenty-one, here's some additional uh, maintenance projects that we like to do. Uh, we like to do, uh, start up our crack seal program again, uh, five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we believe we can do about four hundred and twenty-five thousand linear feet. Um, and that should get us the majority of our collector streets and some, and start us into our residential. So we really, that crack seal, if you remember back to that, that maintenance program we've talked about before, crack seal is an integral part of that, that program. And really needs to be done about every couple of years in between your uh, your seal coat projects. Uh, in twenty twenty-one, we're recommending that we remove the railroad quiet zones. We're not saying that this isn't a worthy project, project. Um, it is, we're leaving it as an alternative project. What we're saying right now is that uh, it's a million dollars and, and uh. Uh, we think we can uh, use that money in other, other places right now. And then there was another placeholder for unidentified sidewalk, unidentified sidewalk project, fifty thousand dollars. Again, we've got a lot of sidewalk stuff going on, so we recommend putting that uh, money back into the sales tax fund. Twenty twenty-two, if there's no questions, we move on to twenty. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, this money that we're um, reallocating, I guess, on the quiet zone, is that already allocated for another CIP project?
What uh, that, a, a majority of that million dollars.
Uh-huh.
Is gonna be used on those three sidewalk projects we talked about in uh, twenty nineteen.
Okay.
That's seven hundred and fifty, I'm sorry, was it a sidewalk? I'm sorry, let me go back up to that. Um.
No, uh.
No, I'm sorry, it's a Navarro medium utility improvement project and then the two curb ramp sidewalk projects. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Tanglewood in twenty twenty-one. Uh, you have. Uh, you have, uh, replace the existing water lines and sanitary, sanitary sewer lines throughout the subdivision.
Yes ma'am.
But in this five-year plan, there's no paving.
Yes ma'am, we have a, a whole lot of, of debt capacity coming available in twenty twenty four. And that would be when we would plan to repave those streets and, and a lot of others.
So with, with not an excruciating amount of specificity, but with a fair amount, explain what you would do in twenty twenty one and what the streets would look like between twenty one and twenty four.
We would go in and, and open cut those streets and replace the water and sewer lines and then go back in and pave right, pave them back over. And so it'd look very similar to kinda what you've seen downtown where you've got the, the, the open trenches and they go back in, compact it, bring limestone up and then whatever the, the asphalt surface was, whatever the thickness was. So it'd be very, in, in some areas of Tanglewood, be better than what they have right now.
Can feel free to visit.
This won't get done in one year either.
No, 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 absolutely not, it will not be. This is, this is a utilities, this is kind of a, a placeholder. We'll have to phase this out when we get a little bit closer to it. And we'll have, and, and then we'll also phase in the, the road repair, the road rehab.
And then, but ultimately, when we, again, can't bind future councils, but in twenty twenty four, when we have even more debt capacity, it would be rebuilding the streets or as opposed to the?
A full rebuild, yes ma'am.
As opposed to the crack seal?
Yeah, it'll be a.
Or the chip seal?
Yeah, it'd be a full rebuild.
And then, and then there'd be maintenance after that.
Yes, yes ma'am, then we start our, our maintenance on it. Okay, so in twenty twenty two, we had no recommended changes. And with that, if there's no more questions, we can move into twenty twenty three. But I wanna give you opportunity to talk about any items you have in those other, other years.
Question on twenty twenty two, although I think you answered it. Uh, the handout, the rating of Vista Del Sol is low, but I think, is that the one you told me that was, it's a higher rating?
No, the Vista Del Sol is in twenty twenty two seal coat, is that what you're talking about? Or rehab, it's a rehab overlay?
Okay, it's a street rehab. What does that mean?
Let me find that. So what we'll do there is, uh, we're basically gonna take that down to the subgrade, bring back in GeoGrid, limestone base, and basically do a full rebuild on that street, on those streets in that area. Hot mix overlay.
Not replace subgrade, just turn it all up, mix in some lime?
Not the, not the subgrade, we'll leave the subgrade with, but we'll put some lime in it, yes. Uh, but then we'll bring in limestone base, GeoGrid, and, and rebuild that street.
It'll be just like Castle Hills. What was done in Castle Hills is what's gonna be done in Vista Del Sol.
I believe so, yes ma'am.
Where's Ken? I'm needing Ken to shake my, his head. Okay, thank you. I think you need to move so I can see you.
That's the whole point.
On the Dairy Road reconstruction, does that include that bridge? Are we able to salvage it?
It does not include the bridge.
Okay, so it's, it's good.
The bridge would be very expensive.
I know.
I was thinking of the road and bridge fee we pay the county, that we'd see if they're interested in that project. Along with also the bridge on Leary Lane to share in the cost of your sidewalk, so. I don't know what the road and bridge tax is, anybody help me out? A nickel we all pay? So I'll be asking them about that, I'm serious.
Okay, well, with that, if there's no more questions, let's move into year twenty twenty three. So twenty twenty three, of course, we're gonna have some seal coat projects we're recommending. These include the Boulevard Edition. Uh, that's three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, the street rating there is a ninety-eight. And I wanna point back, you know, point out again that, you know, those streets that are in between a ninety and a hundred, which is a, an excellent street rating, we wanna keep them that way, so that's why we're doing these maintenance projects. Detour North is a, has a ninety-three, it's a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Feel free to stop me at any time if you have a question. Windcrest, four hundred and ten thousand dollars, just got a street rating of ninety-seven. Eastside Edition, a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And I found an error in the packets that y'all have. I believe it had a much lower street rating. That street rating that was in your packet was based on the entire neighborhood. This map shows what we're actually gonna be doing and that average street rating there is a ninety-four.
Did you get that corrected for the web version?
Yes, this is a version that's going on the website.
Not a seventy-nine then?
No, it's not seventy-nine, it's ninety-four. For the, for the streets that we're, for the streets that we're sealing, yes ma'am. And then the next one is Greenway Park. And again, I found another error, I had the wrong map, I had the, the same map from the previous slide as well, we've corrected that one. And that'll be corrected on the website as well. So this one is a, a little bit lower street rating than we normally do, it's an eighty-four. But we looked at these roads and they're actually in pretty good shape, so we think they'll be able to take a seal coat. Of course, in twenty twenty three, we'll revisit them again, you never know what they'll look like. We'll have to, as we do with all of them, we're gonna pothole them, take soil samples and, and make sure that what we're, what we're recommending is, is the best, best recommendation to you. But as it stands right now, we think a seal coat will hold. Right, moving into our residential street projects. First one is Lone Tree Acres. Again, a full reconstruction, lime tree to subgrade, GeoGrid, limestone base, a, a single seal and hot mix overlay. Street rating over there is a seventy-nine, project is one point four million.
And Mr. Delgarza, this is the neighborhood you were asking about, I think last week or the week before, when it was scheduled for rebuild.
Is, but this is still with gutter, with drainage ditches or?
This does not have, this does not have drainage ditches, we're gonna try to address those, the drainage out there sooner than that, just with our own forces. We think we can get in there and, and work those ditches ourselves.
Okay, but it, it would still have ditches.
Yes, it's not curb and gutter.
We're not gonna put, we're not gonna put curb and gutter in there, we'd still have ditches. But that area does need some attention with the, with the drainage and we're gonna try to do that in-house.
Hey Donald, that does beg a question, I mean, not that, but what you just said prior about obtaining core samples and, and base prior. Do we do that? How far in advance do we do that? I mean, we, we've got recommendations here to, to do maintenance, but yet we don't even know what those bases are.
We typically start that before we, before we start the, the year of the construction project. I'll give you an example, we did Spring Creek, that Country Club area. You know, a couple of weeks before the contract and found out that Spring Creek is in bad shape. We're not gonna be able to, we're not gonna be able to seal coat that road. We've pulled it off of that list and we're gonna have to do something else to it. So we, we don't wanna do it too early because things can always change, but we do do it in advance. Give us a good idea of what's going on out there. Oops, I'm sorry, went to the wrong slide, hit the wrong button. Okay, Lake Forest reclaimed seal. Lake Forest has a average street rating of seventy-nine. We want to come in there and typically we, we don't do the reclaim, but we think this is a prime candidate for a reclaim and a two-course seal. That project is nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And the final street rehab, rehab is Bon Air Phase One. In a previous planning year, we will be replacing water sewer lines. So it'll make a perfect time to come in here and rebuild this, rebuild this phase of Bon Air. Very similar to what we've done to North Heights. Three point two million dollars, street rating is a seventy-five right now. Okay. North Street Phase Five, this is just an extension of the, of the work that we, we have planned for North Street. Again, this will be a four-lane hot mix section, replacement of water lines, sanitary sewer lines, sidewalks and new curb and gutter. Street rating is a, is a sixty-five, which is probably very generous if you've driven it lately, it's pretty rough, four point five million dollars. And Guy Grant Rehab Project. This project is basically taking Guy Grant, where it starts at Salem and goes to Mockingbird, which is a very narrow, two-lane hot mix section, piping the deep ditch on that one side and widening this road to a three-lane concrete, basically one lane in each direction with a center turn lane. Some drainage improvements that I already mentioned, utility improvements, water and sewer line replacements, and the addition of a hike and bike trail, eight-foot multi-use hike and bike trail, starting at Guy Grant, going down towards Green Belt Park or Greenway Park, Green Belt Park. Following the outfall there through that park, hopping over Mockingbird and then extending following that outfall until it joins back up with the existing Lone Tree Hike and Bike Trail. That project is ten point seven million dollars, including everything.
Please note the mid-block crossing of the hike and bike trail.
Yes, it will, it.
That'll be a topic for the twenty twenty-three city council to discuss.
If built, as it's shown here, it will have a mid-block crossing.
Can't, can't burrow under or go over.
Well, you can.
You could, but that price of poker changes quite a bit.
That's just an interesting example of the, how long it takes sometimes to arrange the funding and order the projects because that, I think a lot of people talked to me about that five, six years ago. And look how long, you know, it's significant, over ten million dollars. It's definitely needed, but it's a lot of money.
Okay. So the final three projects in twenty twenty three are the Primrose Place Utility Replacement Project. That's basically replacing all the water and sewer lines throughout that subdivision, five point four million dollars. And again, we'd be coming in a future year to repave the streets afterwards. Same thing for the Blue Ridge Utility Replacement Project, three point nine million dollars. Only exception is that Blue Ridge also has some upgrades to the storm sewer system in that area. Bring it up to the, the master drainage plan recommendations. And the last one is Crestwood South. Again, it's replacing water sanitary sewer lines. And then also in this one, upgrading the storm sewer system in the area, five point two million dollars.
Tony, is the main that's on Crestwood is okay?
Yes, yes, believe the, it's the, the mains are in good shape.
Okay, just 'cause I was making sure, 'cause we have.
Well, you gotta also, also keep in mind.
Crestwood coming up in that section, we're doing both sides.
I'm sorry, I, I need to rephrase that. Remember that we've got some Crestwood projects coming up right now, where we'll be replacing those water and sewer lines over the next couple of years on Crestwood. Crestwood Phase One, Two and Three, I'm sorry?
When we're rebuilding Crestwood?
Yeah, we'll be, in concrete, we'll be replacing the water and sewer lines during that project.
Doing that for.
So in twenty twenty three, they ought to be in excellent shape.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so that's all for the projects. What I did wanna just kinda show you real quick is that from two thousand nine to twenty eighteen, we have approved, or y'all have approved, two hundred and twenty-five million dollars worth of projects. Some of those are complete, some of those are still being under construction and some of them haven't started yet. With the plan that we just showed you, you're looking at adding another hundred and twenty million dollars, which brings a total planned CIP through fiscal year twenty twenty three, three hundred and forty-five million dollars. Total estimated funding available through that same period is three hundred and forty-six point four million. Leaves unappropriated funding of one million dollars, which is all sales tax at this point.
It's a lot of projects.
Yeah, it definitely is.
Donald, before you jump into that, you had mentioned that Spring Creek Drive did not show to be a candidate for the double seal coat, chip seal.
Yes.
I didn't, did I miss it? I didn't see it on any of this five-year?
That's, that's in the twenty eighteen seal coat, the one that's going on right now.
Right, but we know it's not.
We haven't been able to determine.
Can't do anything and we're gonna have to do something else with that road.
Absolutely, we're gonna have to do something else. We just haven't determined what we're really gonna have to do with it yet. We, we needed some more time to put a plan together.
Okay.
We'll just have to fit it in with the funding. So I meant, and it may be that we come back with a recommendation that we move something in exchange to do that, so.
Well, yeah, you, you never know and we may have, some of these seal coat projects have come in, you know, a little bit under budget, maybe, maybe we can do something. We'll just have to, have to see how some of these projects turn out and see if there's anything we can do. But it's definitely on our radar and we just have to, have to make it fit.
And you know, that, it also brings up a good point though. We talked about, this is a planning document, you know, when you start getting into twenty-two, twenty-three, you, you don't know what the conditions are gonna be of the projects or what the revenue sources are gonna be. And that's why we focus on, this is our five-year plan, but we really know, need to know at this point if nineteen, if we're okay with the nineteen projects. And it, you know, councils have seen that we're fluid if we need to be. If something comes up and we need to move a project in order to do another project, we do that. So it's not, until we sign a contract for a project, nothing is setting stone, so.
Right, absolutely. Okay, well move, yes ma'am.
Okay, yeah, I have a question on alternate.
Okay, well, let's move into, let's go ahead and move into alternate projects and other needs.
And this is where the fluidness will come in.
Yes, so we have a list of alternate projects here. Leary Lane, North Cross Drive, Mallett, US Eighty-Seven, North Side Road. Of course, the ASR Phase Three, OCR Interconnect Project, Railroad Quiet Zone, we moved it over to alternate. And in the five sections of Ball Airport Road, we can, we can go over either, any of these that you like to. I have an aerial view of any of these and we can talk about them as you, as you wish.
Well, because I brought up Leary Lane, I'd like you to, to present it. And then I have a question on North Cross, so if you'll just cover both of those, you know.
Sure, sure, okay. So Leary Lane Sidewalk Project is constructing a four-foot sidewalk, involves storm sewer and the existing roadside ditch along Leary Lane between Bean Cook and Stockfire, six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Can you remember the distance on that? Was it three thou, two thousand feet or? I wanna say it was around two thousand feet, it was a pretty long stretch there. But there's storm sewer to deal with, there's driveways to deal with, so it was a, a pretty big sidewalk project.
And so the storm sewer to do, deal with is because you'd have to some, somehow what, make it deeper to take the same capacity?
Yeah, you have to, you, you have to, no, you have to cross those, some, you have to cross some, some box culverts, right?
Build a bridge.
I think, I would like a thorough explanation of this because the comment says that it seems expensive, so can, would you do that, Ken?
What, what it involves is on Leary Lane, the, there's limited right-of-way on, on Leary Lane as it stands. And there is a roadside ditch that is anywhere from eighteen inch to thirty-six inch pipe. In, in order to fit that sidewalk in that roadway right-of-way and give some space between the edge of the road and the sidewalk, you don't wanna put sidewalk right up against the road with no barrier, is you have to cover that ditch. You have to fill that in with storm sewer and it's various sizes between eighteen and thirty-six inch pipe. That's what makes that sidewalk so expensive in that general area. And any, when you're looking at any sidewalk project such as Nursery Drive, same type situation involves, you have to cover that storm drainage. And a lot of the curb and gutter streets you see where there is sidewalk, there's storm drainage underneath it. In a lot of the neighborhoods, you just don't know it's there.
This, this is just me being dumb, so, but can't you make the ditch be deeper, which would carry the same amount of capacity but could be narrower?
You, that just involves a safety issue. And then you have, it gets in, there's just not enough right-of-way. You only have maybe fifteen feet, if that, from the edge of the road to the right-of-way line. There's, there's not much room and making it deeper or narrower, that again eliminates, you got safety issues of a deeper, narrower ditch that's harder to maintain right up against the roadway surface. It, it was a lot of issues. We've looked at, to be honest, we've looked at Leary Lane sidewalks since ninety-two. It's, it's been out there, we've, we've looked at all kinds of options.
Ken, or whoever, Donald, look in at this map. Where's, can you place the mouse, where it, the ditch is, the crossing, the little bridge? That strip, that strip that's platted right across from Vixenburg, I don't know if that's right-of-way, but where's?
Right here is the, is the.
Put it on the green part.
Right here.
So is that right-of-way across there by chance? I don't know who would own a little strip like that.
I would have to look to find out, I don't.
So, okay.
I think what Ms. Scott brought up before, and I think what we need to know is, is this a project council wishes to move forward in the next few years? And if it is, then we just need to look at that cost and see what we can move to another year. And, you know, that's one of those things, any of these alternative projects, if that's, council wishes us to push that up into the five-year cycle, we just need to know so we can work on that and come back with recommendations.
Well, I think this, I agree with Jan, I mean, this has been an annoying thing for twenty, thirty years and it's just because of the cost and the situation and the circumstances there. I know staff has tried very hard and you just come back and it's just, we have to bite the bullet and spend this money. I guess the trick would be to see if any other municipal partners wanna help us out on that bridge. Because you have to make, I know, I know what y'all are thinking, it's crazy, but you basically, that existing bridge will not, you'll have to add on. crazy, but, uh, you basically, that existing bridge will not, you'll have to add on to it for the sidewalk, I'm assuming. You can't just route it on, I haven't gone over and looked.
I think I misspoke when I, when I said that there was a box culvert. I think what Ken is saying is that the cost is that there's a, a ditch that runs all the way down, all the way down Leary Lane.
Oh, I understand that, I know.
And, and so, we don't have a, necessarily a bridge we have to cross, we have all that ditch we need to pipe.
So, oh, okay, okay, so the bridge itself is not the largest piece of this, it's just, you do plan, I thought I might've heard you say you were gonna pipe that, but I didn't think, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I would say we probably need to just make sure the school district isn't back there making plans to close Roland School and move somewhere else before we go build in Leary Lane, but other than that, I, I think this is something we've been looking at, pardon me?
We'd probably be the last to know.
We'd be the last to know.
Well, you could, I don't know that it would help too, but an idea, I'm just sitting here thinking, as you leave the school at Dean Cook and go down Leary Lane, that's vacant field down there a little bit, if you went to the property owner and split it right down the property line and say, can we take a right and run this hike and bike trail down and connect it? Because the hike and bike trail's right there, other side of all that we-satch and those fields, there's, there's nothing in the way. Those two plots, you see where Timberline, Timberlane is? And then those two lots, those are just big open lots, till you get down to the RV, not RV, trailer park down there. So, if a landowner was willing to say, I tell you, you know, we, we would take it down to about forty percent of that distance, then take a right, just connect it to the hike and bike trail, might require a little right-of-way or a little land purchase, just a thought, and-
Good option, we can, we can take a look at that.
I, I think I know someone who recently acquired some of that, that could say, hey, are you interested? You know, I don't know if someone would, I'm getting ahead of myself here, but we can talk about it.
I guess what we need to know is that, you know, is there a majority council that wishes us to push this up and see when we can get it in the funding cycle? And I, I hear two.
My personal opinion, if, uh, V I S D is not gonna close Roland School anytime soon, that is, definitely needs to be moved up, because right now, a lot of those students are going across into Mockingbird to get to Faith Family Church to find a place to, to, to load up in the car. It's, if you go by there right when they get out between three-thirty and four-fifteen, it is a nightmare, and I can't believe we haven't had a student hit, struck yet, it needs to be fixed.
Let's not start any rumors about closing schools.
Thank you, thank you, Jan.
Let's not start any rumors, if we just-
Okay.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, we just, uh, need to verify that, just on the off-chance that they're working on a ten-year plan or something like that.
I'm indifferent to it, it just depends on what you're trying to knock out with it.
I think, I think I heard enough that we'll work on, um, what we can pull and substitute.
Maybe we can get it cheaper, I don't know, we'll see.
I, I, Ken does a really good job with his estimates.
Oh, no, not his estimate, I'm talking about, like, the plan I was thinking of.
You do a good job with your estimates.
He's all, he's okay, I guess. I'm kidding, he does.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, and you wanted to talk about the North Cross Drive?
Please.
Okay. So, that's basically extending, uh, uh, extending North Cross from its current ending point to the future Placido Benavides, actually, that section of Placido Benavides is existing, uh, four-lane concrete curb and gutter, uh, with a conjunctive use trail, one point seven million dollars.
My question was, um, whether four lanes is realistic and whether four lanes is necessary, and I'm not really familiar with what North Cross is that's in existence, whether that's two lane and four lane, and so I was just wondering whether even, you know, if we could do it.
I wasn't really involved in, in this, but I, what I would assume is that, you know, that short section, you know, you could do it in two lane, but for that short of section, it, it's probably best just to go in and do it, do four lane, 'cause that's what it would end up being in the future. You know, a longer section like Placido, makes sense to kind of build that out in two lane, come back in a few years from now and, and make it a four lane, but this little bit right here, just, just get it while you're there.
This price does not include right-of-way acquisition.
Absolutely, it does not, does not.
Is that first section of North Cross, is that a four lane?
Uh, I think it starts out four lane, then next down. Is that correct, Ken? You might as well just sit right back here, buddy.
It's a, it's got a median down the middle of it, and it's twenty, twenty foot on either side, so it's, it's four lane.
Okay.
Ken, don't, a, and this is problematic to me, I think it could create problems in the future, because I think traffic volume would increase there, but help me remember, on that section that's got that medium and those two twenty lanes, isn't there parking head-in?
I don't remember if there's parking. The apartment complex dedicated that section of right-of-way for North Cross, and there's apartments on e, there's apartments on either side of the, uh, North Cross.
I think there's head-in parking there. Uh, it's just gonna change the whole dynamic, y'all have to really look at that.
Well, they're probably using it almost like a private drive at this point.
Yes.
Since it doesn't go through.
I, I, I purposely went over there and looked at this, it's been a while, but I thought, man, that's, anyway, okay.
Okay, is there any other, any of the, any other of these product, projects you'd like to see?
Um, Northside Road Annexation.
Northside Road Annexation.
One thing I noticed in this, um, they've expanded that more, that neighborhood, this goes all the way down, probably another twenty-six lots.
Yeah, it's, this is probably an old picture.
Yeah, um, I just gotta say, I don't see the benefit in doing this, and I know it's just kind of one of those, it's been out there for a while, um, but it costs a lot of money to provide our, our water and especially sanitary equipment out there, and that's to people that already have wells and septic systems that are gonna get grandfathered in, even if it was annexed, so, um, it's just one of those projects that, yeah, I could see that's where some growth might happen, but for what we're getting for it, I don't see the cost bearing it out.
There are two people from that area, Jessica and Bambi and Paco Drive, have asked for, if, would the city consider, because their systems are getting close to failure stage, and, uh, they're having troubles.
But that's not what this is, that's on the other side of the road.
No, I see that, it's across the road, but, uh, at some point, I don't know what we do when you've got a developed neighborhood, and there's always gonna be people that don't wanna be annexed, and you'll have those that do, flip a coin.
It's a, it's a discussion that, you know, a few years back, we had a discussion on annexation, and it's a discussion this council's gonna have to take up again, or we're gonna end up ringed with, uh, subdivisions in our ETJ with very difficult to annex in the future, so it, again, it's one of those things we've internally been talking about, when is the right time to talk more about annexation. Um, so, we've got to, that's a, a problem that, or a challenge that we're gonna need to talk about, so, growth or no growth, I mean, so, but, uh, it's not, we did not push this into the five-year planning cycle, again, this has been there for several years, so.
Any others? All right, well, if not, we can talk about some of the other needs, I'll just show you a list of them, um, if there's any that you'd like to, uh, talk about, I believe that, uh, there's staff back in the, in the gallery that can, uh, come up and visit about them a little bit.
Well, that Fire Station Five relocation, um, that property that we acquired, is it large enough for the regional concept?
I don't think so, Tanner, I meant, Tanner's shaking his head, no, uh. It's a, it's a great question, though.
Yeah, our, our existing facilities are typically being built on two-acre lots, so, we're talking about almost a double facility plus another, uh, building that would be a multipurpose building in that same area. I don't know what the current, I kind of measured all that out, but I don't remember what it was on the current plot that we were looking at for that regional concept, but I'm thinking that's closer to about four.
Okay.
But I know where some land is we can get, if you wanna do that. I got, I got sent that earlier this evening, so.
You know, the Fire Station Five would be a great project if we can, uh, you know, three point five million falls, falls from the sky for us, but it'd be a great project to do.
What's the, why is it that? Because the others that we did, like, three in a row, were about two point six.
I don't think they were, what was the last one, Tanner?
I thought they were.
Two point eight?
'Cause we saved money by using the same design.
Yeah, we're just, you've got an inflation cost there with construction, and, and we're not sure when we're gonna be able to do it.
Okay.
Would the, the other fire station then would be sold or abandoned?
That would be my recommendation, she'd sell that property.
For like, three point five million.
Sure. It should sell by the square foot.
I would say on this list, uh, just because it's bang for the buck, those two at the Red River event area, I really hope that, you know, we could maybe have on the other side, you know, if we have some good sales tax, maybe we can fit, they're small, but they're meaningful to public, and, you know, that big slab over there, um-
They're just sitting there.
Compared to everything we've looked at, that's not a lot. Um, I hope we can maybe find a way to fit those in a little sooner than later. I think it would get a lot of usage, so, I'm gonna kind of park that one in the back of my mind, and if we keep seeing those sales tax come in, maybe we can talk about it, but, I know, we have so many needs, so.
Okay.
I just had a question, uh, I don't know if I, it wasn't clear in the picture, the Riverside Park splash pad, can you go to that and tell me exactly where it's going to be, because I don't see where it's, unless you marked it.
My recommendation is up by the children's park, uh, kind of, you know where that road is, that used to, we used to use to go to the, uh, service water treatment plant, we no longer use that road, so, and then you've got the baseball field. Am I about spot-on?
Right there with that baseball field, Elder Field, uh-
Can you point at it, so I can see?
Oh, can you point?
Right, right in this general area, right in here.
Between Bluff and what's that other street up there?
Uh, that's not, that's just a drive right there, um-
Right here is where, right here is where my new office is.
Okay.
And so, right across the street, this is the, um, uh, baseball, an old ba, Little League field, that'd be the general area with this, where we're proposing.
That, where that pavilion was, you know, across from where it was, you know, that big old green building they had out there at one time? It was covered, it was a covered area, it was green.
That may have been before my time here, I don't remember.
I don't know, yeah, me either.
Yeah, yeah.
Could be.
It should be a concession stand right across, it was really built up first.
Oh, okay.
It was across the street.
It was over by where Colby's office is at, where the old concession stand-
Oh, no, that old, yes, yes, that, that was right, right around my, that's, that's the building right here, that you're, you're speaking of, I'm sorry.
Now, this is just right next to the children's park.
Okay.
And that, this little, that's a little driveway right there, where, uh, you know-
Parking.
Parking, yeah, and, um, we used to use it for, uh, service water treatment plant employees to come into the plant, they use Independence now, um, so, it's just right there.
Maybe we can bring the concession stand back too, I'm, it's the Astro Pops.
Oh.
If you approve this budget item, I'll get you some Astro Pops, so, without a doubt.
There you go, Colby.
Colby, stay there, thank you.
Uh, that road, Bluff?
Sir?
No, that's not Bluff.
That, it's, it's got Bluff, but that's not Bluff.
Bluff goes down.
That's Independence.
Bluff's down.
Independence.
I'm sorry, this is, this is just for our-
That's a driveway.
For our, for the service water treatment plant, this is Bluff coming in right here, and then it just comes through right here and stops at the gate and turns into Independence.
Independence.
That's, that's just how it's-
Okay. That, this area right here in the middle, that's just a driveway, it's not a street name, it's just a drive.
I was gonna stay with parks, but change the subject a little, because we do have the splash pad at the community center, the splash pad on Airline, and soon to have the splash pad in Tracy Park.
Yes, ma'am.
Something else that's on this list, though, is the, um, solar security light project for the, all the trails in Riverside.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, I see that that's phased, and so I wanted to kind of bring that up and have a little discussion about that, because, um, not that splash pads aren't great, but we have several of them, and I know a lot of people use all of these park roads and, and trails, and so, I, I wasn't familiar with this at all, and I do see it's phased, it's something that I'd like to see us, you know, put some time into seeing if it can be done through just your regular plan, or whether it needs to be put in here, so I thought I'd let everyone take a look at that. I don't know if there's some priority areas, anything like that.
You know, I think with the trail system, the, the, the entire loop gets used, and so, it's, it was a way to find a way to, to fund it, you know, in, in a phased, uh, time period, it's not, you know, if, if we get the entire money, then we could do it all, I don't know that there's a, a priority zone one or two a, at that point, but, you know, and, and we can do that, if, if there is an area that, that council sees as there wanting to be a priority. To me, it'd be the entire project, but, yeah.
Where would you start? Where, are you, do, the phases, are those prioritized?
The, the phases that are listed there are, are not prioritized, they're just the, the different zones and what the cost would be per zone.
Okay.
I, I can tell you where every, where it's dark, 'cause I, from running in the wintertime.
Sure.
So, we would run around seven, eight, and what is the opaque blue, the picture's covered in? Seven, eight, and five are lit, so we run there in the winter, 'cause they're lit four, and this three is black as night. Tell you some interesting stories about running into animals at night there, but, um, these are, and, these can be phased in because they're independent, they don't need to be wired, these are actually solar, or-
Yes, they are solar lights, now, the battery is, is lifted up so that there's no flood wor, worry about that, that, so the battery's up, up high, twenty foot in air, or whatever height the, the top of it is, that's where the battery would stay, and so, anything below that would just be concrete or, or steel going in.
About how much do you think one costs roughly?
Um, I think, can you go backwards on this, Donald?
One light standard?
Yeah, maybe some-
Yeah, I think, uh, I would have to get that number to you, Mr. Mayor, I, I don't remember off the top of my head, I apologize.
I'm curious, don't go to any trouble, I just, I just, just a community opportunity to participate, I don't know.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And the trail extension also falls into that, that, that ends up, if we could ever do the trail extension, then we've got an entire concrete loop around the whole park, so.
Especially Vince's shade structure also could be incorporated into a small project, you know, it's-
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. I know Gilbert will do a good job keeping these projects in mind when he sees that he's got a little bit of extra revenue, for, and they're one, it's one-time money, it's, so, and that's kind of nice.
Okay, there's no other questions on these? Then, we're at either discussion and questions, or if you've gotten all those answered, then, uh, we just need kind of a nod to what to do with eighteen and nineteen, and we're-
I'm good with what you presented for eighteen and nineteen.
Okay.
Well, we really only need to worry about eighteen and nineteen, because we reprioritize each year anyway, so what this council or the next council decides next year is more important than what we decide tonight. We only get to decide for one year ahead.
So, that's a yes, right? For, I'm just kidding you.
No, it's the truth.
I understand.
Yes. Yes, final, night, eighteen and nineteen.